I'd like to call the October meeting of the Pitt County Planning Board to order, please. We'll have a roll call to be followed by a prayer which I will give and a pledge of allegiance by Kenneth Ross. Tab, if we have the roll call, please.
Fay Barefoot.
Here.
Brad Guth. RJ Hemby.
Here.
Anthony Heron.
Here.
Ricky Hines.
Here.
Plate Malloy Jr.
Here.
Matt Nobles.
Here.
Johnny Penner.
Here.
Maria Rogerson.
Here.
Kenneth Ross.
Yeah.
And Mr. Chairman, we received word that Danny Smith will not be here tonight.
Thank you. Okay, let's stand, please. Lord, we give you thanks for this beautiful day you've given us. We thank you for the blessings that we all enjoy. We're just gracious for this time that we could come together to go about this agenda. We ask that you be with us and any decisions that we make will be in the best interest of all parties served. We ask that you continue to be with us and God directs us. Amen.
Amen.
Y'all will join me in pledging allegiance facing the flag.
I plead allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, thank you and welcome to everybody that's here. Thank you for your presence tonight. We will start by calling James Ford. I think we're going to discuss the recent planning board reappointments.
Mr. Chairman, if you would go ahead and contend with the minutes from last meeting two and then I'll get on to that.
Oh, okay. Sorry about that. I did skip that. I hope everybody's had an opportunity to read those minutes and if so, I'd entertain a motion.
Second motion.
Okay, it's been made and approved. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you.
Very good. Again, we're holding pat with our regular 11 members because the four members that were up for reappointment all said that they were willing to serve yet another term. So with that, we have Ms. Fay Barefoot back on for District C and that's actually voter districts four and five. And again, these are three-year terms, so each one of these will run on till September 30th, 2020. Mr. RJ Hemby, District Three. Also Ricky Hines, District Four. And District A, which is one and two, is Danny Smith. So all four of those are re-up for yet another term. That's great. We appreciate y'all's willingness to serve. So with that, the reappointments are in. So we've got our standing 11-member board, same as last year's. And with that, I'm going to turn it over now to our Assistant County Attorney and he's going to help with the election of officers for the upcoming year.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Members of the board, my name is Jordan Smith, Assistant County Attorney. And per your bylaws, rules of procedure, at your October meeting, you elect a chair and a vice chair. So I'm here to walk you through that process tonight. We'll start with the election of a chair. Any member can nominate any other member, including him or herself. Nominations do not require a second. And if there are multiple nominations for the same office, we will vote on them in reverse order. And with that, unless there's any questions, I'll open the floor to nominations for chair.
I'd like to nominate Ricky Hines.
Any other nominations?
I'd like closed nominations.
All right. Hearing other nominations, all in favor of Ricky Hines being named chair, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It sounds like Mr. Hines will be the chair. Same rules apply to the election of vice chair. I can repeat those if there's any questions, but they're not. Any motions or nominations for vice chair?
I nominate Matt Nobles.
Any other nominations?
I move nominations be closed.
All right. All in favor of Matt Nobles being named vice chair, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? One other administrative matter before we reshuffle the chairs, there just needs to be a motion to appoint James Rhodes as the Executive Secretary to the Planning Board.
I nominate James Rhodes.
All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations to the new chair and vice chair. It's been suggested we take a brief moment of recess to shuffle the chairs.
Shuffle the chairs. Good evening. Like, welcome you back to the Planning Board meeting. Next up is Mark.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight, the first request we have is for eastern recreational properties. This is a rezoning request. And their request is to rezone 8.6 acres. It's located on 264 East, near its intersection with NC 30. And their request is to go from general industrial conditional district for a concrete plant to general industrial conditional district for recycling materials and collection and processing operations. Here's an aerial view of the subject property. And this is a picture of the property taken from 264. And this photo was taken on-site of the property. This is another view across 264 East of the subject property. And this is taken from the property looking across 264 towards NC 30. You can see an existing commercial building. And this is a view looking east along 264 and looking west. So now we have our future land use map up. This is kind of what we base our recommendation on, one of the factors. You can see the areas designated as a commercial. And to the west, there's a commercial crossroad community. And surrounding area is rural residential agricultural. And you have some heavy commercial industrial to the east of this property. So the commercial designation is intended to include commercial uses, office and public institutional, light industrial, and limited residential uses. And the martyr to large-scale commercial uses should transition to office and institutional or higher-density residential uses that would buffer surrounding lower-density residential. This is our existing land use map. This is the current land uses that are out there today. You can see the subject property is industrial. And you have a kind of a mix of residential and commercial in that area along 264 and NC 30. And the rest of the area is largely undeveloped. This is our current zoning map. This is what the changes requested for. You can see the subject property is currently zoned general industrial. There's a conditional district for a concrete plant only. And you can see some RA to the south and rural residential to the north, along with some general commercial just across 264. Part of the conditional district requirement is to provide a site plan. So I've kind of put in some colored shading to highlight some areas on the site plan. You can see the existing concrete pad is where the existing use is contained. And since it is on 264, there's a highway corridor overlay that requires vegetation around the entire site. So you can see that. Some of it's existing and some of it is proposed to go along with this use. So the general industrial district is what the request is for. And that's intended to accommodate a wide range of manufacturing, warehousing, wholesale, and related commercial and service use in areas that have access to major thoroughfares and the utilities to support that development. The staff recommends approval of this request to rezone 8.6 acres from general industrial conditional district for the concrete plant and to rezone to general industrial conditional district for the recycling materials collection and processing operations. And we also recommend that the request is consistent with the land use plan and is reasonable and within the public interest. So we recommend the following additional conditions as well. As I mentioned, the required landscape buffer must be installed within 90 days after approval of the rezoning, or the owner may provide a surety to Pitt County to ensure this requirement is met within a set period of time. NC DOT has required a driveway permit for this site. And the driveway must also be paved 50 feet from the existing edge of pavement onto the site. So this request, we believe is consistent with our land use plan because it's located in an area designated as commercial in the future land use map. And it's near area designated as heavy commercial industrial. And we believe the request is reasonable in the public interest because it's located on a major highway across from an existing commercially-zoned property. And the applicant also owns adjacent property to the north, south, and west of this parcel. So here's our rezoning process outline. Public comments can now be entertained by the Planning Board. Then you'll make a recommendation to the county commissioners. And they're scheduled to hear this request at their November 20th meeting. And at that time, they'll take action on the request. And at this time, you can open up for public comments, Mr. Chair. But I do want to let you know, we did receive one call from a property owner out there who was opposed to the request due to noise and said there was also an odor associated with the land use.
Okay. Thank you, Mark. At this time, we're opening it up for public hearing. And we had no one to sign up. So we can just close it? Any of y'all have any questions? Oh, I'm sorry. Is anyone else out in the audience that would like to speak on this request? No, I make a motion. We approve the request. Have a motion and a second. Motion made by Mr. Penner.
Can I ask one question real quick before we go forward? Is this, I know they're currently grinding material out there. Is this so that they comply with?
That's correct.
Okay.
We have a motion and a second.
Sorry, one other question. So are they going to be, when you're saying recycling, is it going to be an inert debris somewhat landfill? Or what, what kind of facility? I mean, because it looks like based on the pictures, they're taking like natural vegetation. Are they bringing anything else there?
I think the materials they're bringing there are mostly, you know, wood, telephone poles, that type of thing, and then grinding them up for boiler fuel.
Okay.
I think they get poles from Duke Power and other power companies when they phase them out, age them out.
So are they going to be required a landfill permit?
The only permit that we never got or received from the state was for air quality. We do have some calls into hazardous waste, just to double check on that.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, that brings on another question. I heard in your comment section that you talked about odors. So where is the odors coming from?
The poles.
The poles?
The poles, the seed.
When you grind them up, they're going to create something.
It's just kind of like when you smell like wet mulch, kind of sometimes that biodegradable material kind of puts off like certain odors.
Thank you.
Any more questions?
I guess the only other question would be the hazardous waste part, you know, with the, I mean, the stuff has been soaked in Chris. I mean, is it considered hazardous or not?
We do have the applicant here. He can probably better address that if you want.
My name is Wayne Bell. To answer your question, is it hazardous? The law requires it to be put on asphalt or concrete. It's not to lay on just regular earth. This has to be on concrete asphalt. And the only, the state only required air quality and air quality was checked. So I hope that answers your question. And the smell that she's talking about is definitely the timbers that you do smell. And you don't always smell that. I guess it just depends on the day, really. But I could not sit here and tell you that there's not an odor because I don't think I'd be honest. But I don't feel like it's an odor that's very disturbing. Or it's not just disturbing to me, but it may be disturbing to someone else. So I hope that answers your question.
One other question, I guess. You said it's, this material's being sold for boiler fuel?
It is sent to Craven Energy.
Okay. Well, and I guess they would handle as far as the environmental part of it once it's burned and?
Yes, sir. Absolutely.
Thank you.
All right. Again, we have a motion by Mr. Penner, second by Ms. Fay Barefoot. Call for a vote.
All right.
All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, likewise? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Next up is Eric.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is our second rezoning request of the night. It's for ARAP Two LLC. It's also a conditional district rezoning request. They're requesting to rezone five acres. It's located on Stansburg Road, just east of its intersection with Bell Road. It's parcel number 13276. Requesting from rural agricultural to general commercial conditional district. And that's for the operation of an enclosed warehouse. Just to give you an idea of the location, it is at the far western end of the county. It's about four miles west of Farmville, right near the Pitt County and Green County line. This is a picture of the property. See, there's an existing warehouse located on the property as well as an old double-wide office trailer. The applicants have proposed, are proposing to use the warehouse for their, their use. And also are proposing to remove the office trailer as well as another trailer behind it and some bulk barns that are all abandoned. So again, this is a better view of the warehouse and the double-wide office trailer that's on-site. This is looking on the east toward Stansburg Road if you're heading back towards the Greenville side or back towards Farmville. And this is looking west on Stansburg Road towards Bell Road. And then this is the property to the south. So you see it's fairly rural area. There's not a lot of other uses out there other than farmland and residential. The existing land use, you see it's predominantly agricultural, undeveloped land with scattered residential, primarily along Stansburg Road. And you see the existing warehouse is there is shown as commercial on the land use survey. It was operated at one time as Tar River Sports, which was some sort of wholesale fishing tackle business, but it's, it's not been operated at for, for some time. And it's currently just a vacant warehouse now. Land use plan designates it as rural residential agricultural. And rural residential agricultural designation is intended to include low-density residential agriculture, forestry, churches, very limited commercial, office, or public institutional uses that meet locational criteria. And those criteria, again, are frontage and access to a major state highway or secondary road, location at a major intersection, proximity to similar uses, and spatial separation from non-compatible uses. Zoning map is you see pretty much everything in that area is zoned RA. And there's not really any other commercial, probably until you get to Farmville with some of their zoning. But for the most part, all the property in that area is rural agricultural. The general commercial district is intended to accommodate a range of retail, service, office, limited wholesale, and moderate-density multifamily residential uses in those areas that have access to major thoroughfares and utilities to support such development. The conditional zoning district allows for the approval of a specific use. Again, this was, the proposal is for a general storage warehouse. And that's, it's considered warehouse, general storage, enclosed in the zoning ordinance. With reasonable conditions to ensure the compatibility of the proposed use with the use and enjoyment of the neighboring properties. This is the plan that was submitted. You see, highlighted in the red, there is the existing building as well as the double-wide office trailer and bulk barn and a tractor trailer that are on-site. Purely from a land use standpoint, staff finds that the request is not consistent with the land use plan because of its location. It doesn't meet the locational criteria for the rural residential district. It's not on a major thoroughfare. Stansburg Road, if you were further back towards Farmville or Greenville, you could probably consider it a major thoroughfare. But this end is just really not heavily traveled at all. And it's not in close proximity to any sort of commercially-zoned property. We also find the request is not reasonable and within the public interest, given the size of the area. It's five acres. And then again, as I mentioned, all the surrounding properties within the vicinity are rural agricultural and the area is predominantly agricultural and residential in nature. So therefore, staff does recommend denial of the request. And at this time, we'd like to entertain, entertain public comments. And the board will then make a recommendation to board commissioners. They're also scheduled to hold a public hearing on November 20th, at which time they'll take action on the request. And Mr. Chair, we have received an email from one of the neighboring property owners. I can, I can back up to the map to kind of show you where these folks are. You see, there's a little, of the larger tract, there's almost a little donut hole in the middle of it that's split out. These folks, Mr. Rawlings submitted this email today. It is in your, it's been handed out in front of you, this email. I'll just read it. They are, they are in favor of the request. And what they say it is, "Thank you for your assistance in presenting our comments on the rezoning application hearing tonight. Based on what we've been told, it is our feeling that the applicant's request should be approved for the following reasons. It is, one is our understanding that all storage will be under roof and therefore it will be low impact on the environment and the community, unlike an agricultural use, which normally has tractors and implements in the yard and sometimes in an unsightly state. Number two, we've been informed that the only traffic will be the delivery or removal of vehicles and no full-time personnel will be on-site. Number three, the benefits of this are that there would potentially be less wear and tear on the roads and less pollution to the environment than many other applications." Said, "If the information we've been provided as to the intended use is correct, we would appreciate the board's consideration in approving this rezoning request." And that is signed by John and Brenda Rawlings. So y'all have copies of that in front of you as well. And with that, Mr. Chairman, we'd like to open up for any other public comments.
We'd like to open up for public hearing. We do have one person that signed up, Mr. Johnny Henning.
I don't think I can use that because I wasn't anticipating speaking tonight. My name's Johnny Hennings. I work for the, or I'm an owner of the company that's proposing this redistricting. We found this property for sale. We are a forensic engineering company. We're involved in litigation, insurance claims, and product liability suits, things of that nature. And we have a need for storage. We need to store evidence. It needs to be stored inside. And so we found this property, found it appealing for that use. So we would be, we expect if we were to be able to use the property as a storage facility, we would have probably one visit a week by an employee. There would be no staff on-site. The uses would, it does have office space. We have no intention to use the office space other than air-conditioned storage space if we need it. There will be no heavy traffic. Evidence will be delivered either by pickup truck or a rollback tow truck. The, we propose, as Mr. Gibby had mentioned, we're going to clean up the double-wide trailer that's in pretty dilapidated condition. There's a bulk barn and another 48-foot van trailer that we're going to remove and clean up and maintain the property. And we're going to install a security system for our own purposes because everything has to be monitored. And that's really all that I can say. I didn't anticipate speaking. So I don't know if you have any questions for what we intend or how it's going to be used.
What type of stuff will you be storing there? What type of evidence?
The evidence could vary from a broken chair that's involved in a lawsuit to a wrecked vehicle. That, there really isn't a specific type of evidence. We get involved in all types of matters. But generally, it's product liability, a broken chair, a door frame that failed, cars that are involved in automobile accidents. We're working on the reconstruction of the accident.
Any hazardous materials or anything that creates a smell or any type of, I guess, unpleasant, that would make that facility unpleasant for people around?
Not that I can think of.
Anyone else have any questions?
Do you have any other facilities near this area, like in the eastern region? I see the office, I guess, is in Raleigh, the main office?
It is. Our office is based in Raleigh. We store items there in our office at this time. And we, at this time, we are using rental units, the self-storage units. We rent those and put vehicles and other evidence in those things. That's what we do at this point in time. Okay. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Do we close the public hearing?
Again, like I said, I just want to read our, our staff recommendation is denial based off the land use plan. I'd like to turn it over to the board for, I'd like to answer any questions that you may have.
Anybody have any questions?
Initially, it was as zoned commercial. Is that correct?
It was not zoned commercial. It's always been zoned RA.
Okay.
The building, we did, we did do some research into the building itself and the permitting history. The building was built in 2004, the warehouse part of it, or not, not 1994, I'm sorry. Building was built in 1994. It was actually permitted as a residential storage building. In 2002, it was added on to with additional warehouse space. And at that time, it was, we don't have any permitting records, so we can't verify. But we, we're under the assumption that it was transferred over to commercial and was meeting the commercial code at that time. And it was for Tar River Sports. So that was in operation prior to our zoning ordinance coming into effect in 2003. So it was being used as a commercial use. At some point in time, Tar River Sports went out of business and vacated the building. And so it's evidently been vacant since then. But I don't have an exact date of when that was. But it was commercially used but not commercially zoned. Yes, sir.
You're talking five acres?
Yes, sir.
That they are requesting to get rezoned. Just, those five acres is not going to be used for storage, right?
To my understanding, it's not. They do have some plans to expand the building in the future at some point. But it's, it's considered enclosed storage. So I don't, maybe Johnny can answer a little bit better as to what their plans are for the rest of the property. But the, the use would be for enclosed storage itself, not any kind of exterior storage.
And the staff is recommending denial of the request?
Yes, sir. Like I said, that's purely based off the land use plan.
Anybody else have any questions? Anybody else have any questions? Do you want to respond? Yes, come back.
When we initially began this, when we were looking at this property, our concern was could we use it as a storage facility? And we contacted the planning department and they said we would have to get a conditional rezoning. We could not get the rezoning for the 129 acres. And we said, "How about 10?" And we were told, "No, it has to be less than that." So we chose five acres and had it surveyed. We can certainly reduce that size if that were the matter. But that is the reason that the five acres was chosen was based on discussions with the planning department.
So you guys bought the whole, whole 129?
We're under contract to purchase this.
Under contract for the whole thing, okay. What are your plans for?
For the remaining, to use normal timber, timber management for the rest of the property. And then the extension that Mr. Gibby was speaking of, we have proposed potentially having another 8,000 square foot added to the back of the building away from the road, connected to the building.
Thank you. Thank you. Any more questions?
I've got a quick question for Eric. So there's no threshold of acreage that you would have recommended approval?
Not really. When, when they initially started talking about the acreage, we told them that the conditional zoning would probably be their best option to get a rezoning. And we recommend that to most people when it's not really cut and dry, that it's in an area for commercial or non-residential use. And so when they were asking about 10 acres, we said, "Well, in this area, there is no other commercial zone property." And so 10 acres would certainly not be appropriate. And so then they submitted it as five acres. And so that's what we had processed the application for is five. But again, like I said, the, yeah, in terms of the land use plan, I don't know that even one or two acres would be, that we'd be in favor of that based off the land use plan. Yes, sir.
So the conditional, conditional use permit, they would only be allowed to use for storage?
That's correct. Well, it's conditional zoning, there's no conditional use permit associated with it. So once it's rezoned, it would be only for that use, yes. And like I said, if the board, if, if the board was leaning towards going against staff's recommendation, you could also place reasonable conditions on the property or on the rezoning that they could abide by. Mr. Hennings would have to agree to most of those conditions. But in terms of things like the size of the addition or being enclosed storage only, the board could consider those conditions as well if, if you were looking at going against staff recommendation.
Currently, this is a bank-owned property, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so it was just abandoned and hasn't been used for anything since?
That's right. The, and Johnny might have a little more information on it, but it is owned by, it shows being owned by Yakkin Bank, which is also owned by First National Bank of Pennsylvania. And then the middle portion is owned privately by the Rawlings. So I'm assuming there was probably some sort of foreclosure action that preceded all that.
Okay, what's the pleasure of the board?
Moving to deny.
Second that motion.
Got a motion that made by Mr. Hemby to deny and second by Mr. Anthony Herring. Call for the vote, all in favor, say aye. Let's do, let's do it by hands, please, by show of hands. All in favor of the motion, raise your right hand.
To deny?
To deny?
For deny. The motion is for denial.
To deny?
To deny. All right. Tab you get, yeah, deny.
The motion, just to be clear, just to be clear, the motion is for denial of the request.
Denial, right. Keep your hands up, please. All right. All right.
Into approve?
Now, all in favor to approve it, raise your right hand.
Someone didn't vote. I have five to two, but we have nine members.
I showed seven to two.
What did you get down?
All right, let's, let's do this again. All in favor of denial, raise your right hand. Aye. Okay. All right. All in favor?
This would be, I'm sorry, this would be in opposition to the motion.
In opposition, right, in opposition.
Correct, yes, sir.
Raise your right hand. So this request has been denied.
Right, the recommendation is for denial and that will be forwarded to the county commissioner for November 20th. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Eric, you still up?
Yes, sir. Just have two quick planning matters and these are mainly updates I want to provide to the board. The first is just an update on our progress on the Southwest Bypass Corridor. We've mentioned that last month that we have, we are, have selected Stewart, Stewart Inc. out of Raleigh as our planning consultant on the project. We are starting to get things underway. Again, just to kind of give a rundown of our completed tasks in the last month or so. The contract was awarded to Stewart. We had a project kickoff meeting with, with not only county staff, but also our municipal partners and NC DOT. At the board's meeting last month, the board did appoint Ms. Barefoot and Mr. Hines to serve on the project oversight group. That's the, the group that will work in conjunction with the technical group to serve as the steering committee for the plan. The contract has been submitted. It was reviewed by NC DOT and also the Office of Inspector General. We got those comments back and they had gave the blessing to the contract. And then Stewart has also begun compiling the background documentation and plans and GIS data for their review and analysis. So we're under, that's part of their first set of tasks. The next steps will be to finalize the contract with Stewart. That's being routed through our county process now through our legal staff and financial, our financial office and finally with the county manager for his signature. We're expecting that execution probably, well, we're already in mid-October, but at least by, probably by the end of the month to have that contract ready to go. Then we'll begin organizing stakeholder interviews with property owners and business owners in the area and start finalizing the organization of those two study groups and to develop our distribution list for, for those committee meetings. Does anybody have any questions about that so far? Okay. The next item is just an update on the North Carolina Farm Act of 2017. This is, this is the act that regulates all, most of the agricultural activity in the state through counties. We have one sort of zoning-related change to this act or change to the general statutes based off this act. And just want to make you guys aware of it and let you know that we are going to be bringing some amendments to the board next month to, to take care of this. But the Farm Act was signed into law in July. My governor Cooper, it's session law 2017-108. And that amends North Carolina General Statute 153A-340B. And this statute is the county's, this is the statute that gives counties authority to regulate development through zoning. In section B, there are all sort of exemptions for bona fide farming activity. And one of these now is that the statute, as far as the amendment is concerned, eliminates the county's authority to regulate large-scale swine farms. And those are defined as swine farms with a waste management system with a design capacity of 600,000 pounds of what they call steady-state live weight or greater. And so that's a fairly large-scale farm, that's 600,000 pounds of hog that it's designed for. So now, all swine farms regardless of size are considered a bona fide farm and they are exempt from county zoning regulations. So currently, the ordinance for such large-scale farms requires a conditional use permit. We have never in 14, 15 years of zoning issued a conditional use permit for a large-scale swine farm. So we don't get a lot of attention for them. Most times it comes up is when they are, when somebody is purchasing the property, purchasing an existing farm or doing some kind of refinancing or something and the bank needs some information on them. But we have not had any new large-scale farms come into the county. But needs to say, we do have that language in our ordinance and we need to take it out. So we'll be bringing that to you next month with those amendments to be in compliance with that Farm Act. Does anybody have any questions? All right. And with that, I'll turn it over to James. Thank you.
All right. Mr. James Rose?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Congratulations on your election, Mr. Vice Chair. I would also like to mention, so you're already on notice. You'll have a November meeting. Eric will be bringing some amendments to you about the zoning ordinance. There are also some statutory changes for our subdivision regulations too. The definition's been modified to a certain amount. We need to include that in our subdivision ordinance. And there's now a requirement for an expedited review process for certain types of land division. So in turn, you'll be seeing subdivision ordinance amendments at your November meeting as well. So we'll go ahead and put you on notice. We will be meeting in November. Okay, informational items. We had a very nice event on Saturday. And this lady that you see on the picture is my president of the American Planning Association. She flew all the way in from Denver. She actually was at a conference there, but she's out of Indianapolis. But she came, she chose to come to Pitt County. She didn't have to come here. We were very honored to have her here. She did a great job and given us, given us a very nice certificate as a great place. We were one of 15 that were actually identified throughout the nation this year. We were one of five within the great public spaces category. And this was primarily for our county home complex. If you're familiar with that, that's out on County Home Road. It includes our district park, farmer's market, community garden, winter green schools, council on age, and several activities that are out there. And we've been designated the first ever in North Carolina as a great public space. So we're very excited about this designation. And not only did we have this event to get this recognition, we also unveiled our very first natural trail out there on site. If you're out in that area, it's a perfect time of the year to be out in the natural environment, good weather. We've got about a mile and a quarter of trail that we've kind of meandered through our woodsland there. And it is something to behold. So if you get an opportunity, come out to our district park. You can access it right off our paved trail and go right off to the southern side and you can walk to your heart's content. There are some wildlife in the area, but mostly deer, how about that? So come out and enjoy your trip through the woods. You can see here, we had a big cast that were involved with the program. We did get a nice certificate and a lot of good recognition. I will say, the best thing I heard on, when I was just thanking her after she left that day, she was flying back to Indianapolis after being here only a few hours, that our president Cynthia Bowen said that she'd like to use Pitt County as a model for other rural areas as far as how they can get people involved, have different services kind of located together to bring people to one destination point. Very much what we've got out there at the county home complex. I will say, our commissioner Jimmy Garris knocked it out of the park with some of his comments. He wove it all together as far as all the services that are together out there. This property's been in the county's hands almost 200 years. You might know that's where the old county home was, operated up until about 30 or 40 years ago. And it's just interesting, that's where we took care of people for many years. And now we're also improving the health of our citizens out there at the same area. So it's quite a nice area. One of the other additions that we see in the near future is taking advantage of what used to be the Pitt Community College greenhouse facility is right where the old county home sat. And we're hopeful to use that as a more passive active, passive recreation area. It's got some nice pecan and oak trees, so it'd be a nice area for a nice picnic shelter and get you out of the heat during the summertime. So just, this was, instead of a ribbon cutting, we had a rope cutting to, this is right at the trailhead for the new trail. And a lot of people were involved with this. Our soil and water office were, they were instrumental in getting a lot of work done out there. Everyone from our county attorney and looking at certain contracts and all. You can see our county manager, a lot of people involved in getting this done. So we were really excited about having this opened up and a lot of people took out on the trail. So you can see Mrs. Ross, Mr. Ross's wife, was even out there in some open-toed shoes. It is that type of, it is a nice facility. I hope you can get out there at some point. Any questions about the Great Places Award? You can tell we're, we're owned to this. We've got a lot of ideas out there on site. We mentioned to you last meeting that we're looking at an emergency shelter slash safe room slash gymnasium. We're actively working with our legislative group to try to get funding, to seed money to go along, hopefully with some commissioner funding in the near future. That would actually, we could have a gymnasium on site here that could really fill a lot of our needs day to day, especially with our senior population. So we're moving on with that and we'll continue to keep you posted. Any questions about this event? Okay, onward. Oh, I would like to recognize Mr. Hemby and Ms. Faye Barefoot. They did attend on Saturday and were promptly recognized, so that was, that was good. And Mr. Hemby, this is a good segue right into the next item. Our planners' conference, great success here. This was the last week in September. We had about 400 planners from throughout the state that were here. This is the first time that Pitt County and Greenville have hosted this. We've been trying for a very long time. But you can see here, this is one of our opening events. And we've got our guest speaker up front. And this place was packed out at the Greenville Convention Center. It's a perfect place for us. Had a lot of vendors and a lot of people only commented about the facilities there and really were taken aback with the changes around Greenville and Pitt County. Just as an example, we have mobile workshops. We planners like to get out and about and see what's going on. So this is, on the far left of the screen, you can see our community gardener. She's there. She's got a group of folks, of planners that visited our county home complex. Because not only did we win this national award this year, we won the state award last year. So we wanted to bring the planners out to that area. We had a lot of good input, a lot of good questions on a very hot day as folks were out and about. Also, we, we went out to the dairy farm. Again, this is in Green County. However, it's a prime example of agritourism. Eric just mentioned, you know, it continues, the definition of agritourism continues to broaden. This is a great example. If you're knocking out there, try it out. It's a lot to see. It's just a great family environment too. And it's a good business on top of everything else. So it's a neat place to go. And I grew up on a dairy farm. It's nothing like being around the cows. So that was a good day. Lot of other things going on too. We also have our active transportation plan that the commissioners just approved on Monday. This deals with pedestrian services, biking, any alternate form of transportation. So what's really good about this, this incorporates what's currently the City of Greenville-Greenways Plan. We had been successful in getting an amendment to that plan to have a connection to our county home complex. So this has been brought over now to our active transportation plan. And again, it shows a connection through the Greenville-Greenways Plan out to our county home complex. This connectivity is a good thing, getting more people walking and biking out to our county home complex when that vacant property adjacent to our park is developed. Also, a number of other things in your package tonight, including some articles and some reports. And with that, Mr. Chairman, that's all we have for tonight unless you have questions.
Anybody have any questions for James? Anybody have any questions for James? As usual, thank you, great job.
Thank you.
Planning Department. And also, too, at this time, I'd like to recognize Mr. Coulson out in the audience. Always good to have you, but it's. Anyone else have any questions? Planning Board is adjourned.